We'd like to welcome you to the Norwood City School Board meeting tonight. It is May 16, 2019. Norwood City School Board follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we fully discuss our agenda for the board meeting to follow on the third, Thursday of each month. At the board meetings, we encourage you to attend, watch, listen to the committee meeting resulting in the actions at our board meeting. A full disclosure is for our committee meetings are announced. Board meetings are video, audio, tape, as well as posted on the web for your viewing. All meetings are public and visitors are welcome. If you can, hold the roll, please.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Faulkner?
Here.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Baller?
Here.
Mrs. Orza?
Present.
If you guys could stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item would be 1.04, which would be the adoption of the agenda for May 16.
Full motion?
We've got a motion by Ms. Bauer.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Let's see. Next item is 1.05, would be for the minutes of April 18, regular meeting. Do 1.6, too?
Doing both.
Okay. Then 1.6 would be the minutes for May 7, committee meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting on April 18 and the minutes for the committee meeting on May 7 of 2019.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Orza.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Next item would be presentations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Sabo, Superintendent of Norwood City Schools, 1986 Norwood grad. Our first presentation tonight is actually from our GEAR Up director. And if you know what GEAR Up is, in the high school year, we do a great deal of work to help students and families make that next step if they choose college. And so with us tonight is GEAR Up Director Jamie Kemp, and she would like to acknowledge some very important people that have been important to the work that she does. So, welcome, Mrs. Kemp.
Well, I'm here tonight to thank a partner to our community and to the GEAR Up program that's been helping the community for the last four years. So Gina Pinto-Williams, if you don't mind coming up for me to talk about you for a few minutes. So Gina is the owner of Liberty Tax Services, which is just right around the corner from the high school. And for the past four years, she and her team at Liberty Services have graciously offered to do free taxes for our families and students in the middle school and high school, as well as our staff. And over those four years, I was looking back at my database today, you've helped an excess of 50 families, and that's not even counting our staff that have gone and taken advantage of that as well. So I think it's just a wonderful partnership. And I did want to share one story, because sometimes I think when you have a drop in the bucket, you don't necessarily know the effects that it can really have. In this spring, we had a senior girl, and she was applying for a scholarship. But in order to apply for that scholarship, you had to have your 2017 taxes completed. You had to show proof of a FAFSA, which is your financial aid application for college. Can't fill that out until you have the taxes done to get it finalized. And she was really concerned that she wasn't going to get to do the scholarship application, which she really needed and was really important. So we talked to her dad, and he was a couple of years behind in taxes, and he felt really overwhelmed, wasn't sure how he was going to get everything caught up in time for this scholarship deadline. So I said, "Well, let me call Gina and just see if there's anything they can do." And she genuinely was just said, "Have him come in, we'll get it taken care of." And you better believe they did, and it was done in time for that scholarship deadline. But I only tell this story to say that that senior girl ended up winning the scholarship. So she got a full tuition scholarship and will be going to UC in the fall. But genuinely, she would not have been able to maybe do that if she hadn't had the generosity of a company in the Norwood community. So that's all to say that one little small roadblock can really be the difference of a student getting to college, and particularly without any debt, because that's amazing, and the student really deserves it and needs it. So I hope that you know how far your generosity really is spreading in the Norwood community. And so I just want to give a very heartfelt thank you to you, because I really do appreciate the partnership, and I know that it does mean more than maybe you know always, so just want to share that with you. And just to say thank you, I just brought you some flowers and a GEAR Up umbrella, because you can never have too many. I really do believe that as well. So, thanks.
Thank you, Gina. And you know if you carry your umbrella, it doesn't rain. And honestly, I really thought you'd be coming today in your Statue of Liberty outfit.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for all you do.
The opportunity and the, you know, the opportunity to work with you and with the families. I do believe in giving back, and not everything is taken. So I'm so glad that I can be a little bit part of the community and giving back a little.
Thank you so much. Thank you so very much. Next, I'd like to call to the stage our Director of Curriculum, Mrs. Christina Chesson. She has a very special recognition this evening.
I have another wonderful lady to recognize tonight. Tonight, we'd like to take some time to show our appreciation for an elementary teacher, Michelle Reagan Van Hook. We recognize her for 34 years of service in the Norwood City School District. Michelle, will you please join us up here? Let's give her a round of applause. Michelle attended Norwood View from kindergarten to eighth grade, and then went on to Norwood High School, graduating from the awesome class of 1974. Her life in Norwood didn't stop with her high school graduation, and after college, she joined the teaching staff at Norwood. As a matter of fact, her mother, Mrs. Jackie Reagan, still lives on Drex Avenue and is with us tonight to celebrate as well. Welcome, Mrs. Reagan. Michelle was hired in the spring of 1985. She's taught at Williams Avenue Elementary, Norwood View Elementary, and Allison Elementary during her teaching career. We all have a tremendous respect for Michelle and for Norwoodians that come back and teach in Norwood. We believe that giving back is something that we all should aspire to do, and Michelle is a prime example of giving back to your community. We're grateful for her years of service. There are many ways that Mrs. Van Hook supported the teachers and colleagues. She was instrumental to many new teachers in setting up their classrooms and beginning their teaching career, giving them positive advice for what's to come. For students, she was crucial to their success in countless ways. One of the most charming comments that we received this week was a note of gratitude from a student who mentioned, "I had Mrs. Van Hook in first and second grade, and we had a little kitchen set up in the back of the room. She used to cook things for us all the time, and we like calling her Mrs. Van Cook." And I thought that was pretty charming, that this student remembers that from many, many years ago. Michelle, we thank you for your service and the wonderful things you've done for our staff, for our buildings, and the many students that you've impacted in such a positive way, and we honor your commitment to Norwood City School District. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you for the opportunity to serve here. I have such special memories, not only in growing up, but with each class that I was able to teach. It's amazing to see them throughout the years in different locations. Norwood will always be in my heart, and all the students here will always be a treasure to me. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to our Norwood sister. Next, we'd like to invite Mr. Joe Miller, our middle school principal, to the stage. He is going to read aloud the Rising Stars information. So every month, we like to recognize students from all across the district that in many cases have been nominated by their teachers. And so your teachers have written a little bit about why you're so amazing and such a rising star. So Rising Stars, when you come up, you'll come up to this area over here on the stage, and you'll receive a certificate from our board president, Mr. Bryant. Then you'll come down and stand right here on the carpet, hold your certificate while Mr. Miller reads about you. Moms, dads, grandmas and grandpas, aunts and uncles will take photos here, and then we'll also take photos out in the main lobby after the Rising Stars are presented. So let's begin. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Sabo, first off, I want to thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure to read these for our students, to introduce them, and then read their write-ups. So thank you for the opportunity. We will start with Norwood High School. Norwood High School's Rising Star students for May are Tanner Leach and Cynthia Gomez. So there's a variety of things that are going on around town and across the country as far as for our middle school students. So there may be some students that are not here tonight, but we're certainly going to read their write-ups and recognize them. So just so you know, so Ms. Cynthia Gomez Martinez is a perfect example for any future advanced placement student that perseverance pays off. Cynthia worked hard and showed great dedication, especially over the last five crucial weeks as we grinded away with the review material to prepare for our college board exam. She had great attendance and was one of the top students in our voluntary after-school review sessions. She is a great representative for Norwood High School, and she is truly a rising star. Tanner Leach is an excellent student at Norwood High School and is a high achiever in his packed schedule that includes two AP courses, AP Gov., AP Bio., and three honor classes. Tanner is a conscientious student who makes sure that he understands all assignments, turns them in on time, and is not afraid to ask for help. When extra credit is offered, he always takes advantage, even when his grade is already an A. Tanner is a model student in the classroom, and it is a pleasure to have him in class. Tanner is also an active member in the marching band, concert band, and jazz band. Tanner makes Norwood High School a great place to learn. Norwood Middle School Rising Star students for May are Eduardo Armenta and Lilly Erhard. I want to take a moment to talk a little bit about Eduardo. He is not able to make it here this evening. He is with the eighth grade trip in DC. But I will say, within probably about a half hour span of time, I received an email and a note on my desk, and I believe he emailed the Board of Education and Dr. Sabo to let us know that he was not going to be here this evening. He wanted to be sure, you know, that we knew that. And so he's certainly a kid that's going places. So congratulations to Eduardo Garcia Armenta. Teachers are lucky to have a student like Eduardo in their class. In a short period, Eduardo has made a big impression here at Norwood Middle School. He has the self-discipline to manage his time well, and he completes his work with a consistently high degree of quality. Eduardo's classmates enjoy that he is willing to be helpful and supportive. While offering a well-timed sense of humor, Eduardo's calm demeanor and responsible work ethic will help him be successful in the future. Eduardo is a great example of what makes Norwood City School District great. Congratulations, Eduardo. Ms. Lilly Erhard, who has made her way down here, I was so happy to see your name. Wonderful, wonderful student, wonderful family. I was very happy and proud to see that your name was listed as one of our Rising Stars. So I'll read this from one of your teachers. Congratulations to Lilly Erhard. Lilly has gone beyond expectations in class. Every day, she enters the room with a smile and an unmatched drive. She is usually the first in the door and among the last to leave. She enjoys singing and has volunteered for every solo opportunity given to her in class. Lilly is an exceptional talent, and we are fortunate to have her studying here in Norwood. Students like Lilly make Norwood City School District great. Congratulations, Lilly. Sharpsburg and Elementary and Primary Schools Rising Star students for May are Adeline Stacy and Kayden Thompson. Ms. Adeline Stacy always follows sharp, that's S-H-A-R-P, expectations, and is a spectacular role model for her peers. She is polite and always willing to help. She works hard, takes time on her work, and shows pride in her creativity. Adeline enjoys reading and creating pictures at the art table. When Adeline grows up, she wants to be a police officer. Adeline has made tremendous growth in all academic areas and should be proud of all of her accomplishments this year in kindergarten. Congratulations to Adeline. Kayden Thompson is this month's kindergarten Rising Star. Kayden has given 100% on his schoolwork, being a friend and a sharp student. Kayden has become a super reader, mathematician, and writer. He enjoys drawing, art, and playing with trains. He has made wonderful progress in kindergarten. He is ready to be a first grader. Students like Kayden make Norwood City School District great. Norwood View Elementary School's Rising Star students for May are Ella Thomas and Sophia The fifth grade team at Norwood View Elementary would like to nominate Ella Thomas to be our Rising Star for the month of May. Ella is an observer. She watches the behaviors of others but is in no way a follower. She is an independent thinker who is always focused on her classwork. Ella goes beyond in terms of her effort in class. She is able to multitask, keep track of her own progress in assignment completion, and always strives to do her very best. She uses constructive feedback to improve her performances and never complains about doing work. Ella loves animals, and her goal is to graduate college and become a veterinarian. Furthermore, Ella is a true friend to all. She is a kind and considerate of others and always volunteers to help. Ella has great spirit and pride in Norwood View and takes part in extra activities that are shaping her into a well-rounded person. Students like Ella make Norwood City School District great. Sophia Thomas is a Rising Star student for the month of May. She is a first grade student at Norwood View. Sophia is an extremely kind individual who is loved by all the students in her class. She continuously works hard inside as well as outside of the classroom. Sophia is always on task and willing to help her teacher or her peers in any way possible. She performs well in all of her academics. Sophia takes ownership of her learning, and she monitors her own progress throughout the year. Math is her favorite subject. She loves to learn equations. Sophia also enjoys playing soccer and practicing gymnastics. Her goal is to become a teacher and a soccer coach so she can help others be successful. Students like Sophia make Norwood City School District great. Finally, Williams Avenue Elementary School's Rising Star students for May are Alyssa Wolf and Alexis Reiber. The third grade team has chosen Alyssa Wolf as their Rising Star for this month. Alyssa is a hard worker, compassionate classmate, role model, and problem solver. She consistently demonstrates her academic abilities by being thorough with her work and double-checking if she is not sure. Alyssa is a student who works until she gets an answer. Alyssa is a student that generally wants to master the skills and the content that she is learning. This young lady is a student that is empathetic to her classmates and helps anyone with anything in the classroom if they ask. She can always be found lending a hand to students in the classroom that may need help with an assignment or to help a student who might just need someone to talk to and is a leader in the classroom. She is always demonstrating positive behavior, sharing her thoughts in class, and following directions closely. Alyssa is a student that has numerous academic and social skills that will benefit her both in school and in life. She says she is not sure what she wants to do when she gets older, but possibly an elementary school teacher. Alyssa has a passion for learning and is a prime example of what makes Norwood City Hopefully, Alyssa, you'll make it back to Williams, maybe, right? We'll see. Finally, the fifth grader teacher's nomination is for Alexis Reiber. She has made great academic gains this school year and has really developed a heightened sense of confidence in her academics, independent work ethic, and social life. Each day, she comes in with a smile and is friends with everyone. She is an example of what a Wildcat champ is, not only for her class, but also for the entire building. Alexis will do a phenomenal job in sixth grade next year, and she plans to graduate from high school and go to college to become a teacher in early childhood education. That's awesome. We need more teachers. Alexis is a shining example of what makes Norwood City Schools great.
So students, stay right where you are. Our Board of Education would like to shake your hand. Of course, they want to get their picture taken with you, because you're famous now. And family, you're welcome to take part in getting this great photo, too. I will tell you, Ms. Havlin is going to do a great job of posting it, and there'll be more photo opportunities out in the main lobby. You know, it's great families and certainly your support that makes for great students. So we're so grateful for all that you do at home.
One, two, three. And I want one more. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Very good.
We'll take a short break in our meeting so that families can make their way out into the lobby for more photos. And you're welcome to come back in for our meeting, if you like.
Okay, let's see. Moving on, let's see. Next item would be the Education Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board. Graduates.
You can go shut the door.
That's what I'm doing. So sorry. She got a little lost for a second. So for the committee report, I think I have the honor of presenting the best thing to have to motion, that the board could have the honor of motioning. First up, 3.01, approving the graduate class of 2019, and for next year, approving a brand-new job description for an elementary STEM teacher, and I'm so excited for that. So I would like to motion for approval of 3.01, our class graduates, and 3.02, our new STEM teacher for the elementary program.
We have a motion.
I want to second that. I do. That's exciting.
We can third, fourth, and fifth it. How's that, guys?
Yes.
That is exciting. I love it. No discussion?
Yeah, I do want to congratulate the class of 2019, and I'm also very excited about the new job description, so.
I agree. It's very exciting. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes. Woo-hoo!
All right, let's see. Next would be Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. I'd like to recommend resignations. You see four names there: Abigail Norris, Patricia Woehka, Amy Verkent Colley, and Jill Scout. That is item 4.01.
Take a motion for the approval. Have a motion. We have a second.
I will second.
Why don't they close that door?
Yeah, don't close it.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Mr. President and the board, I'd also like to recommend item 4.02, items one through seven. Number one, the Student Assistant Aid. Number two, Attendance and Student Accounts Coordinator. Number three, non-renewal of educational aids and student assistant aids. Number four, a non-renewal. Number five, avenues for success. Extended days for number six, and a change in status on number seven.
A motion?
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Bauer. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Let's see. Next would be Policy Committee Report. Mr. Atwood?
Mr. President, this month, I have no policy agenda items to report.
Okay. Just wait.
Just wait. They're coming. Yep.
It's going to come in force, isn't it?
Waves.
All right. Next would be Browns and Committee. Browns and Committee. Let's see. First item would be 6.01, which is St. Bernard Elementary, or St. Bernard Elmwood Soccer, Girl Soccer. Would like to use the stadium. Dates to be announced in the fall from 5 to 8. We're doing that one separate.
Yeah.
That one is separate. Yeah, that one is separate. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
But my motion is going to be no.
Motion and a second.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion for item 6.01.
I'll second it for discussion. So I do have a question for this one. Is it possible to table this approval pending those dates, as long as they do not conflict with any of our own school and make that a caveat to their usage, that our own school would take priority? If it's bringing in money for the district and doesn't conflict with our own students?
I think it's in our policy now, and I apologize if I'm speaking out of turn, but I think it's in our policy now that regardless of what we approve for facility usage, the district gets first right to refusal. So if there's a conflicting date with something that's happening within the district, you know, they're out of luck.
Right. So that's what I'm asking. I wanted to make sure that was true.
Once the sports dates are released for them, it'll be released for us as well, so our sports department or athletic department will actually go through and line things up.
Yeah, they'll take care of that.
So should we table this until the sports dates are announced?
No, because they need to know that they have a place, and if they don't get a place here, they need to know that this is a no, so they could start looking at other places. So tabling it does them no good.
And they're making requests based on the fact that their field is under construction.
Are we ready for a vote?
No. I do have... So when this was originally brought up, this was brought up at the same time that flyers were being circulated in our community from the Elmwood-St. Bernard School District for open enrollment. So my initial thought there was that, you know, no. However, upon further consideration, they are members of our conference, and, you know, recently, we had a little bit of a scare with our varsity baseball field, whether or not it was going to be playable. And when we didn't know whether or not that field was going to be playable, other members of our conference, you know, reached out to us and said, "Hey, if you can't play, we have a field for you." Right? And so the fact that their stadium is under construction, so it's not like, you know, there's a valid reason why they're asking for this need, and, you know, I'm of the belief that, you know, you should pay it forward. You know, I'm willing to allow them the usage of the field for that back. And I would encourage those that are on the fence to maybe take that into consideration. So that's what I have to say.
Anybody else?
Ready? Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Faulkner?
No.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Baller?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
No.
Okay. So the next item would be, let's see, for the next two items is the Queen City Athletic Cup is using the stadium, and then the Little Indians Youth City Athletic Cup is using the stadium, and then the Little Indians Youth Football for Shea Stadium. So I'd like to make a motion for approval on those two items are for the use of the stadium.
I'll second. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Moving on would be the Finance Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The House passed the budget bill with few changes recommended by the House Finance Committee on Thursday, May 9. It passed the House with a vote of 85-9 to 9. A few items were added that concern the school districts specifically. School districts will be required to notify owners when challenging or counter-challenging a property valuation. It will freeze property values on undeveloped land while waiting it to be built upon. It eliminates August special elections. It eliminates academic distress commissions. The House version of the budget bill also did not include the new Fair School Funding Plan, which originated in the House, so I do not believe that will be our new funding formula for next year. They're going to still continue to work on it. Simulations for Norwood City Schools shows increased funding of $106,000 in the second year only of the budget bill compared to the executive budget. The governor's budget had yearly increases of $440,000 and $530,000 respectively, but remember those increases were for mental health-related issues, not for education. The Senate Finance Subcommittee will continue to hear hearings on the bill, and the budget bill still has several more steps before it comes law. 7.01, April month and financials are attached for your review. With your approval, we will combine 7.01, 02, 03, and 04 for a vote. 7.01 is the financials, 7.02 is amounts and rates from the county auditor, 7.03 is auditor's estimated resources and the amended certificate, 7.04 is appropriation resolution and 412 So we'll break those four off first for a vote.
I'll make a motion for the approval of 7.01 through 4.
I'll second.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
7.05 is the five-year forecast. We reviewed the forecast last week, and it's on the agenda for your approval now.
A motion?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you for all the work you put into that. It was a very comprehensive report, and you could tell how much you poured into that, so thank you. I appreciate that. It does take a lot of time.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
7.06 and 7.07, we're going to combine.
We're changing purchasing groups for food service. We're going to approve HPS, and we're not going to participate in 7.07 for unified purchasing.
Do we have a motion? So, no. A motion by Mr. Faulkner, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second one, Ms. Ballard.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
7.08, 7.09, and 7.10 will be wrapped together. 7.08 is the builder's risk insurance policy for the Sharpsburg Construction Project, and I do want to say I just got the quote in today for that. It's $3,700. The risk payment, the risk insurance that we bought for the middle school was over $10,000. So that's just purchasing power with our new insurance agent. So I was very happy on that quote. Insurance on the modulators was $150 for the year. And then the Hope Squad, we have a new group, a new student activity group that requested their own fund numbers, so that takes Board approval.
A motion?
A motion by Ms. Ballard, do we have a second?
I'll second. Good for her. Scott.
Second.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
7.11, we've done separately, that's a tri-state foundation Drake Planetarium lease. We've modified this lease quite a bit, and we discussed it last week. Also, I've added a cancellation clause to the lease since you reviewed it last week, just saying that we can cancel.
A motion?
A motion by Ms. Ballard. A second?
A second.
Second one, Ms. Orza.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
See, 7.12, 7.13, and 7.14, and 7.15 are all combined. 7.12 is donations for our balloon glow event, $300 from Xavier, $3,400 from Norwood Band Boosters to buy a secondhand band trailer. 7.13, resolution declaring transportation impractical for this year. 7.14, approval of a purchase over $30,000. 7.15, Blenden Extend Gas Utilities.
Is there any discussion on those, or would you like any more information on those last two?
So, we have to make the motion and second it, but I do have a question.
A motion?
All right, we got a motion by Ms. Ballard. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion?
So for 7.13, we're specifically just calling out the specific schools in the list as impractical, correct?
Those children, those would have children that we, that are Norwood children, that are going to those schools, yes. So what this does is then, this will set us up so that we can do a payment in lieu of transportation to those parents.
Okay.
Julie, is this a comprehensive list? Moller is not on?
I believe, is Moller a high school?
Mm-hmm.
This is supposed to be K through 8.
Okay.
I think our Board policy precludes us from paying for high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Okay, brings us into the hearing of the public, which we have...
We should do public.
No public. Let's see, next would be the Board announcements. I do have one announcement I'd like to make. I need to step down. I'm going to be stepping down. Nat and I are going to be relocating, we're going to be moving out of the district, and I don't want to put the Board in any position where they have to wait or have to scramble trying to find somebody. I want to make sure you guys have enough time to, you know, find somebody. There's a lot of good people out there that can do this job. And I appreciate the time I've been on this and the stuff that I've learned. I really appreciate that. And there are, there's a lot of good people out there. We seen it last night at a fundraiser for Molly Snyder. They did a fundraiser for her last night, and Nat and I was talking about how this community pulls together four people. You know, I mean, Lisa Tanner was another one, I know he was up there, and the place was packed, and it was packed last night for Molly.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of good people out there. Just got to kind of shake the trees and get them to come in and step up. You know, this will be probably my last meeting, but I just want, I just don't want to wait and put the Board in any position of trying to be a last minute, trying to find somebody. I just want to let you guys know that.
I also have a Board announcement. I can't echo Mr. Bryant's thoughts enough. I've been on this Board for 13 and 1/2 years and worked with some amazing people, and been blessed with the opportunity to serve this community over and over again. Though my passion runs high, still for the schools and for the students, I do feel like it's time for me to step aside as well. So I will be passing out my letters of resignation effective the 31st of this month. If you would pass them down, Mr. Bryant, yours is in there. Effective the 31st of this month, I will be surrendering my seat to, as Mr. Bryant said, one of many qualified and able-bodied candidates who can work in this district. Thank you all for your time and effort that you put into it and for all the hard work that you give us. Thank you.
I have a happier note. Announcement? I'm not leaving, but this week I got to go on a field trip to the zoo with our first graders from Williams, and it was just so much fun. I highly recommend it to any of our Board members if you have the time, since we're already fingerprinted and approved, we're easily substitutable for a parent to step in and chaperone on field trips. I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. And guys, thank you for showing us the ropes, and we appreciate all the work you've done to this community.
Gentlemen, I also do want to say thank you. I feel like both of you are just instrumental in helping me with onboarding, and as a parent, I thank you for every single decision you've made and every time you've been a role model for our kids. I know it's been more than we can ever imagine, and I know, just not myself, but all of the parents in the district, thank you for your time on the Board and the numerous other things that you've done for our community. Thank you.
I will echo both of those other thank-yous and thank both of you for your time and your service and your dedication. It takes a lot to put yourself out there in a public space to be able to serve your community with honor and dignity, and I truly feel that both of you have done that for a number of years, the entire time. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignations?
We can put them on the next month if you don't mind. It'll still have the effective date of May 31st.
Very good.
We'll just vote it down and we can't leave.
Thank you, thank you both for your service to the district. It is appreciated.
Dr. Sable?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to say, Mr. President, as many times as I can, and Scott. You know, I echo what everyone else says, and it's certainly with a heavy heart that we hear you closing the door and moving on to something new and big, but I think you can look back really proudly and certainly fondly of all the good work that you've done on behalf of the students at Norwood City Schools. And you know, I've always been so proud that our Board members are Norwood graduates, and I think that that makes the work certainly very personal, and you gentlemen both have always taken the work and viewed it as something that is extraordinarily personal as an alum, and something that is truly an opportunity to give back. So while thank you seems extraordinarily inadequate at this moment, I say it as big-hearted as I possibly can. We're so grateful for your graciousness. Time, I think, is the most valuable thing you can give an organization or a person, and you've certainly done that and more. So thank you. We do have good news to share. We want to say construction at the middle school is coming along in the East Wing. The second and third floors of the East Wing have been released to us. The roof work is also coming along, hopefully to be finished over the auditorium next week, and we'll move on to some other spaces. The main part of the building, which we know will mostly get a lot of reconstruction this summer, but all of the HEAC has been run, and we're preparing for the opening construction ceremony on Tuesday, May 21st at 3 o'clock at Sharpsburg Primary. We have announced the release of our new app and our newly-formatted website, and soon you can expect us to ask folks to like us on Facebook. Right now, our 8th graders are in Washington DC, and they will be making their way back tomorrow. The Scholarship Foundation gave away about $250,000 in scholarships to our graduates, and I would just like to say graduation was really a wonderful ceremony, and I want to thank the Board for attending, and of course, Mr. President, for your very poignant speech. It was really fabulous. We thank the Board also for just simply participating in the graduation. That's not always something that happens in all schools. And since we're all people that like to mark our calendars, graduation next year is on May 18th. In closing, I would just like to say, as this school year closes, I'd like to say thank you for making this year successful. You know, our quality profile, we will work on this summer, and it will be prepared likely in August. It represents the work this year. But I really want to say a special thanks to the parents and to the community, to the teachers, the administration, and to the Board. It's those folks all together that make a school year truly successful. So thank you. This concludes my report, and I always like to end with love and honor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You got some stuff down there.
I got stuff. Oaks has been busy. Last week's Board meeting, we held a dinner to honor our retirees, and we also held a silent tribute to our friend and colleague Sue Steele, who passed away earlier this month. The Board also approved our 2019-2020 Salary and Benefits Proposal presented to us from our Salary Committee, and we continued our ongoing discussion about open enrollment and what that process could look like for the future growth of the Oaks programs. During our committee meeting, we were also introduced to new plans to introduce a food truck program starting next year to coincide with the construction on one of the Oaks properties. It will be fully electrical, supporting sustainability, and the inside will feature flexible surfaces so they can modify the menu to match any event's needs. Students from our Graphic Design Program will help design the vehicle wraps, which will alternate every year, and the automotive programs will be applying the wraps. So it's truly going to be a dynamic, involved process for all programs in the Oaks. It's a great way for us to be more visible in the community and to offer a new form of cuisine and business education to our students. And lastly, I would like to congratulate William Haney, one of our Oaks students, for winning our Spotlight Award for Fourth Quarter at Scarlet, and of course, to the 16 Norwood seniors who have been attending various programs at the Oaks, who graduated this year, participating in their senior ceremony on May 13th, the day before our graduation, and several of those students were present at our graduation as well, and they were all scholarship winners. So congratulations to those students. And that concludes my report.
Avenues for Success.
Thank you, Mr. President. Avenues for Success has been busy. They have applied for five 21st Century Community Center Learning Grants, which were submitted in April. Three are continuing grants for Norwood View, Williams, and the High School, and there are two new grants for the middle school in Sharpsburg. And each grant has four performance objectives, which are reading achievement, math achievement, positive youth development, and parent and family engagement. The Avenues for Success Summer Blast Camp has 78 students enrolled. They will be making visits around to fun destinations like the zoo, the aquarium, school aid, drama kinetics, Cincinnati Spanish Academy, and the Planetarium will be coming. UMC will be providing a daily lunch and snack, and the Norwood Rec will provide weekly swimming lessons. There will be an open house for families on May 31st, where they can meet the camp counselors and connect with other families, as well as review the schedules and have a family dinner together. New this year, they'll be doing three family pool and grill-out nights for the campers and their families, and the students will be able to take home math and reading activities on those evenings. Laura's goal and the rest of Avenues for Success is to not only encourage family time, but continuing education at home as well. The Glow was a success, as always. Apparently, the weather was less than desirable for the balloons, but there were over 500 people in attendance, and the proceeds will go to The Cure Starts Now, which I feel that this year is more poignant than ever, that this is a good success for us and that our community rallies together. The Girls' STEM Bike Builders Club will be going to Camp Shelterie for a weekend celebrating the success of the completion of the club, and they will be...
the success of the completion of the club, and they will be riding their newly-built bikes on the Lexington Bike Trail. They will also go climbing, hiking, camping, and smores, which sounds like a great time. The Bounce Back to School and Splash Back to School are planned for August, and that's just another way just to help our families be prepared for school and have a little fun while doing it. There were three compliance visits from the ODE in March, and there were no non-compliances with these visits from the doc, or from the documentation that had been submitted in December. There were also two ODE SACC licensing review visits, and there were no noncompliance with these licensing reviews either. And that concludes the Avenues for Success report. Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe I need a drink of water. Julie summarized a lot that I was going to report on in the legislative report. I'll just add that there are legislators who are talking about the possibility of putting various early childhood development efforts under the oversight of one agency. So we'll be waiting for that information to come to us. That concludes the legislative report.
Okay, let's see, next will be meeting notifications. Let's see, our next regular meeting would be Tuesday, June 11th at 5:30 in the board office, and then the Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, June 20th. We'll be going on to the summer schedule, so those meetings will be at the board office during the summer schedule. I can make a motion for the approval of the meetings.
I'll make the motion to approve the future meeting dates.
I'll second. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Next would be, we could be moving into executive session. So we're going to bring a mandatory to the executive session.
Yes, in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensees, or regulated individual. Two, in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at competitive bidding. Four, in accordance with ORC 121.22G4, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation. Six, in accordance with ORC 121.22G6, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or public office. Seven, in accordance with ORC 121.22G8, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance. Was something supposed to be on there? Okay. And eight as well, in accordance with ORC 121.22G81, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under the status set forth in RC 121.22G81, or involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project.
Great, five times fast. I'll motion.
We got a motion by Ms. Ballard. Can we have a second to go into executive session?
I will second.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Executive session at 6:59.